This regular meeting of the Board of Education for February 27th, 2018 is called to order. This evening, we're holding our board meeting in Cleveland High School as part of the new Board's commitment to holding our board meetings in the, out in the schools and the community versus in the school district's administrative headquarters. So Cleveland High School serves about sixteen hundred students and has the second largest enrollment of PPS high schools. Cleveland is proud of its award-winning performance arts programs and is one of two Portland high schools which has an international baccalaureate program. It's also one of two high schools in the Portland Public School District to receive an A on its government report card based on students' tests and SAT scores. I'm happy to identify myself as a parent of a Cleveland alum and I know Director Rosen and Director Moore are as well. So we're well represented. And I want to thank the Cleveland students, we're going to hear from them in a minute, but the Cleveland students who, before the board meeting, shared their experiences with us and their perspectives about not only their experience in Cleveland but just in general in Portland Public Schools. So thanks, thanks for your insights. We're going to first run through some meeting information and then we'll ask the Cleveland principal and some students to come forward and speak to us. So for tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by law. The meeting is being televised live, I believe. Earlier was a problem with the streaming, so if that continues, it will be video recorded and replayed later. Check the board site for replay times. And also Director Constam is unable to attend tonight's meeting. And we also have with us this evening the PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin, who attends all our board meetings. Judy, she's right over here. So specifically Judy will be here to listen to public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who want or need it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or at ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in a language they'll be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be located, should anyone need their assistance.
Khi chào quý vị, nếu quý vị cần thông dịch viên người Việt Nam, xin quý vị tìm đến ở đây sẽ có thông dịch viên người Việt Nam cho quý vị. Xin cảm ơn quý vị.
Chào mừng bạn, tôi tên là Tátia. Tôi sẽ ngồi ở phía sau và chào mừng bạn đến với cuộc họp này. Nếu bạn cần dịch tiếng Việt, vui lòng hãy đến thăm tôi ở đây bên giữa phía sau. Cảm ơn rất nhiều.
Môn Aum, ừm, các bạn có thể nghe thấy tôi? Môn Aum, bạn đang học tiếng Việt, tôi sẽ dạy tiếng Việt cho bạn. Đây là lời của bạn.
Chào mừng bạn, tôi nói tiếng Việt. Nếu bạn có bất kỳ nhu cầu nào, bạn có thể đi hỏi cô giáo ở bên đó. Chào mừng bạn, tôi nói tiếng Anh. Nếu bạn có nhu cầu giúp đỡ tiếng Anh, bạn có thể đi hỏi cô giáo ở bên đó.
Great, thank you. So, to kick off tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the Cleveland principal, Aisha Freeman, to come up and provide a welcome and introduce the students who are here with you tonight.
Thank you. Is my mic on? Ah, yes, it is. Welcome, everybody. I'm Aisha Freeman. I'm the principal of Cleveland High School. This is my first year as principal of a comprehensive public high school, but my twenty-second year working in a large public high school. And I'm truly honored to be here and to be welcoming our board and Superintendent Guerrero to Cleveland High School. I am also truly in my dream job. I absolutely love what I do and love working with young people every single day. Just brings so much joy to me. What I particularly appreciate about Cleveland High School, which we had some time to talk about with our board tonight, is that we're, we are an IB diploma world school. We're also an avid school and we're also growing our career technological education program. We're expanding it quite a bit next year. We have over sixty clubs, including six different culturally specific clubs and a championship speech and debate team, as well as a constitution team, a model United Nations team. When I first landed here at Cleveland High School on July 1st, I was here for just a couple of days, actually, I think it was after the July 4th holiday. And here walked in our student body president, Terrence Paul, and his vice president to meet me. And I have ever since felt so welcomed and well-received by our students as well as our staff at Cleveland High School. So I'm going to turn over the mic here in just a minute and let them share a little bit about themselves and I think you'll feel the same as I did. Terrence Paul is our student body president, 12th grader. He is an IB student and also an avid 12 student. He will be going to PSU next year and he works full-time on the east side at Kingpin. And if you go out there to go bowling, by the way, you'll see Terrence. Kiera Swinth is a 10th grader. She is our elected co-class president. She is an athlete, a lacrosse player and a cross-country player, runs cross-country. And she is very passionate about student governance and leadership and may sit here with me for a little while tonight. James Predisik, James is a 12th grader, will be moving on or graduating and wants to become a mechanical engineer. James is an immensely talented musician. I think I've seen him in every single band that Cleveland has. And he is in our award-winning brass quintet, which will be going on to state. And then last but not least is Michael Ann. She's a junior. She is a full IB diploma student. And today, it is just unbelievable, Michael Ann is here because today, board members, all of our juniors took the ACT. And our juniors are a little weary today from spending, how many hours was it?
Too many.
It was like five hours of taking the ACT, so I'm really appreciative, especially for Michael Ann for being here. I'm going to turn the mic over to Kiera.
All right. Hello, all. Thank you so much for being here. So I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience here at Cleveland, in particular being the youngest one out of the four of us. I'm going to talk about my transition from middle school into high school and what it was like here at Cleveland. So what I like to highlight most when I talk about my transition is the academy system. So right away, I was brought into Chinook Academy here at Cleveland and I made friends right away. I got connections to my teachers and I got a connection to my counselor right away. And now I have a great bond with her and I can go to her for any support that I need. And then the second thing I like to highlight when I'm talking about my transition is just getting involved and being able to feel like I'm a part of the community. So I got involved with leadership pretty early on. I joined the freshman class cabinet and that allowed me to make some friends, get to know some more teachers. And then it kind of carried me into my sophomore year, so now I am the current co-class president of the sophomore class. That was really helpful. And then after that, as I've transitioned into a sophomore, I just feel like here at Cleveland, I've been able to build my identity. And so I think just high school in general is a great time to find, find out more about yourself, what you're interested in, and just who you are. And so I think Cleveland has provided great opportunities for that. So I'm involved with sports like lacrosse and cross-country. I do CrossFit here at Cleveland during the day. And then I'm involved in leadership, I'm involved in class cabinet, I mentor for a freshman class. So there's just so many opportunities to get involved, to find out who you are, and just to expand and challenge yourself, which has been great for me. Okay, here's Michael Ann.
Hello. I'm Michael Ann and I'm a junior here. What I love about Cleveland is that I'm able to challenge myself. Sophomore year, I was making the decision whether to do full IB and I decided to do full IB, obviously, because I'm doing it now. But I find that it's really going to be hard my senior year to do full IB because there's a lot of things I have to do before I get to my senior year. Right now, I'm taking eight classes and seven out of my eight classes are IB classes. So it's pretty hard and there's a big workload. Along with that, there's 150 hours of CAS, which is 50 hours of creative service, active service, and community service. So that's a lot to do by my senior year, as well as an extended essay and the testing for all of those classes. I think my senior year is going to be the hardest because I know many of my friends are only taking about five classes, the minimum. And so when I see them with all their free time, I'm probably going to have a hard time with it because I'll be trying to look over my workload at them and see them having fun. But it's nice to challenge myself and I find that Cleveland gives me a lot of opportunities with the clubs and all of the classes. I'm having such a great time in leadership, helping out the community and just being involved.
Hello and welcome, board members of PPS. I am James Predisik. I'm a senior here at Cleveland High School. And something that I'd like to highlight is not only here at Cleveland are you able to learn and grow academically and scholastically, but you're also able to learn and grow through creative uses or arts and crafts. And in my case, I'm a musician and I've been playing the trumpet for the past seven years of my life. And it has just become something that I can engross myself in. And without Cleveland, I wouldn't have been able to do that. So that is just something that I preach to as many people as I can because I know that it changed my life and I think that it can change many others. Cleveland has bands. They're great. You can learn many things from them, things that you can't learn in a scholastic class.
Alrighty, good evening, board and the superintendent. I just want to close out Cleveland as students, as being the elective student body. I don't have much to say, but I can go on and on and on about why Cleveland is so great. So I wanted my peers to speak as they represent not the whole student body, but just what kind of Cleveland has to offer. I do want to say that we do have some CHS gear for you and one of them being a hundred, or a hundred years old, about, because Cleveland turned a hundred years old in 2016, so they're at your disposal. When you need them, just thank again for coming to my home and I hope you guys have a good time tonight.
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much for being here tonight, sharing the positive things about Cleveland that you've experienced and sharing with the broader community, but also before, for the board meeting, for engaging us in a discussion about what's happening here. We appreciate the new swag. I think Director Rosen, your 2007 shirt needs a little updating. So thank you and Principal Freeman, thank you as well for hosting us at your school tonight, really appreciate it. And if there's any Cleveland staff here or teachers, thank you also for the work you do every day for the kids here. We heard a lot in our, the dinner session with the students about how they're engaged in really a pretty amazing wide array of activities and classes and how each student here has a chance to excel in something that they're good at. So thank you. Superintendent Guerrero, did you want to say anything?
I'm going to gush about Cleveland during my remarks a little later in the meeting because I definitely want to congratulate them on a number of highlights.
Perfect, okay. We'll wait for the gushing. So next, I'd like to ask Director Anthony, you had some good news about another leadership position for the PPS board?
Thank you, yes. People who have been following the board meetings regularly will recall that Rita Moore has now stood twice for a position on the OSBA's Legislative Policy Committee. And I'm very, very happy to be able to say that she is in. She will be sitting on that for the coming year. And congratulations. This is a tremendous opportunity for Portland Public to make its voice heard and to leverage the opportunities that the OSBA gives us in Salem, where we certainly need to have a stronger voice. So thank you very much for what you're going to be doing.
Great, congratulations, Director Moore. I thought there was a hanging Chad involved somewhere there. So other good news for Portland is Portland Public Schools, the House Bill 4117, which makes changes to school financing provisions, has passed the House and the Senate and is on its way to the Oregon's governor for her consideration. This is really a result of some pretty, an outstanding effort by our Government Affairs Team led by Courtney Westling and also by the finance team at PPS for shepherding and leading the legislation through the process. We also want to thank Representative Barbara Smith Warner and Senator Kathleen Taylor, two legislators from the Portland area who were instrumental in moving the bill through the House and the Senate. Before we get into our agenda items, I thought I'd just give a brief overview of our agenda this evening. We're going to start with remembering the students at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. The board will also conduct its first, and teachers, thank you. The board will also conduct its first reading of four policy revisions, followed, following by public comment. The superintendent will have a report and the board will vote on a resolution relating to open enrollment and an initiative called Return to Albina. We'll then hear from the Multnomah Education Service District and vote on their service plan. And then after this meeting, the board has an extended executive session on a variety of issues. So that's our, we probably have a lengthy board meeting tonight. We want to start, I would like to ask the president of the Portland Association of Teachers to come forward. You know, on February 14th, yet another horrific tragedy happened in our nation and once again, it happened in one of our schools. And I know that parents and community members, since the 14th, have been looking for ways to remember the students and staff and also to think about how we can take collective action to make our voices heard to address this. So with that, I'd like to ask Suzanne Cohen to speak. Thank you.
Words cannot express the tremendous grief that our nation is experiencing following yet another school shooting. And the latest tragedy took place at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School on Valentine's Day. And as a community and a nation, we mourn the senseless loss of life and our deepest sympathies go out to the victims and their families and friends. The educators who risked their lives to save others. Erin, Christopher, and Scott. And then the fourteen high school students, fourteen kids. Elena, Alexander, Alyssa, Kara, Carmen, Gina, Helena, Jamie, Joaquin, Luke, Martin, Meadow, Nicholas, Peter. Please, let's have a moment of silence to honor the seventeen lives that were taken too soon. These students went to the same high school that I went to, but their experience is very different than mine. They are a part of the mass shooting generation, a generation where everyone seems to accept these tragic events as one of the risks that comes with getting an education. The responsibility lies with adults like myself, who didn't grow up doing active shooter drills, teachers like myself, who didn't start our careers by pulling blinds and teaching students how to hide in closets. We didn't speak out when these practices became normal, but we have to speak out now. I know that this is personal for me because I went to school at Stoneman Douglas, but if we don't act, it's only a matter of time before it's personal for everyone. We will all know someone or know someone who knows someone. Usually after a tragedy, we hope things will get back to normal, at least as normal as we can bear. Not this time. Complaints and see and normalizing tragedies like this is how they persist. We can no longer normalize or accept mass shootings. We also have to reject so-called solutions that fail to address our problems or create schools that are unwelcoming. When schools start to look like prisons, we know we're headed in the wrong direction. We need solutions that keep our students safe and keep them safe everywhere. Kids also go to movies, concerts, and clubs, all places where mass shootings have taken place. I know that talking about common sense firearm safety isn't normal for educators or for school boards. But in addition to discussing preparations like our active shooter protocols or preventative measures like adding school counselors, we have to talk about policy. I am past the point of debating whether or not gun violence is an education issue. It is. When kids are afraid to go to school, that makes it an education issue. When our society can't deliver on the most basic promises to parents, that their children won't come home from school alive, that means we have to have this conversation. When active shooter drills become a part of standard teacher training, educators must join the debate. And so I'm very grateful that we are working together on events for March 14th, like Wearing Orange and spending seventeen minutes outside together to honor the lives lost in Parkland, Florida. I stand in absolute solidarity with the survivors from Stoneman Douglas. Never again. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. And I want to let you know, I appreciate that in the aftermath, that you reached out to board leadership, to the superintendent, to other staff at PPS and asked us to join you and teachers to make a difference, to take a stand. And looking forward to working with you and the members at PAT and all the, all the staff in the schools and parents across the city to recognize that we've got to do things differently. And I think, as you mentioned, it's really adults' responsibilities to make things different for our students. And at the same time, I've been really inspired by students sort of finding their voice to tell adults what they need and I, and what I think as parents, we all expect students should have when they go to school every day, that they're safe and that they're going to come home. So thank you and we look forward to working with you and the rest of PAT and other school So as we move forward the next couple of weeks, anticipate it, March 14th, I'm going to ask a couple of board members to be on point, to be working with the superintendent and the rest of the school community on how we will voice, will lend our collective voice to broader action in the country and here in our own community. So one of the board's primary responsibilities is to serve as a policymaking body of the district. Tonight, we have four, four first readings of revised policy. A first reading is a formal presentation of draft policies that we share with the board and the community. And it's the start of a 21-day comment period. Two of the policies, the diploma policy and the cash management investment policy have relatively small changes. One of the policies, which is the naming of school district property policy, has some fairly significant changes. And then the last one, the public access to district records policy is a complete revision. We're going to start, board members in your packet, you have all of the draft policy revisions. And these are also uploaded on the district website. The first policy that we're going to have for our first reading is relating to the naming of school district policies. And this revision is a result of several board policy and governance committee meetings and came as a result of a complaint filed by a group of parents regarding the nickname at Franklin High School. The district's review of the complaint found that our school district property policy needed to be updated and clarified, so the naming of our properties and other representations of our schools reflected our school district's values. So based on our assessment of the policy, we've recommended a number of changes. This comes from the Policy and Governance Committee. Director Rosen and Director Moore serve with me on that committee. But in general, we explicit, make explicit that the naming policy applies to not just the names of the schools, programs, but also school mascots, symbols, and other images. In addition, we state very clearly that any names of our properties or schools or mascots, that consideration must reflect our commitment to eliminating systemic discrimination and its impact on student learning and educational activities. Names submitted for consideration also shall not be the name of a religious group or member. And in addition, we make some technical changes to the policy around school convergence, conversions, mergers, and reconfigurations. And that's probably relevant, given the formation of two new middle schools this year. And then the last change that we are proposing in this particular policy is that there be an exemption to the fiscal impact requirement when the party can show that the change is being made to address discrimination. So currently, if you want to rename a school property, it's the proposer of the renaming is responsible for coming up fiscal impact and we're going to be waiving that if they can show that it was, that the change is being made to address discrimination. So not a wholesale rewrite. It was, I think, a fairly thorough policy as it was, but clearly there was some gaps missing and we wanted to update it. So this is being formally first read this evening and it is, as I said, draft up on the district website. And there's a 21-day public comment period. After 21 days, if any revisions are recommended, they'll be considered by the committee and we'll either have a second reading and adopt the policy or we will, if the revisions are substantial, we will then have another committee meeting, update it, and potentially have another first reading, but more likely on this one, have another second reading. Does anybody have any questions or Director Rosen or Moore, do you have anything else you want to add on, about this particular policy we're having first read tonight?
I guess just a general comment. Along with these policies, so the board is responsible for policies, but the implementing document for, that's going to spell out how the policy will be, will play out on the ground, how it will be implemented, is called an administrative directive. So those will also be revised going forward to, to conform with the, these policy revisions. And I, I'm going to be paying particular attention to the administrative directive around gifts. This is, this was a point of some discussion during the committee meeting. And I just want to make sure that PPS remains true to the, to the ideal of being a public school district. And I'm going to be working with staff to, to make sure that we have appropriate guidelines in place and, so I'm looking forward to that.
Great, you should clarify that the gifts relates to the naming in that for significant gifts, there could be property that could be named after the donor, which is an existing policy.
So my question is for, you know, current mascots and names and such, so how is it decided whether a term or name is discriminatory? Is that, is it brought to us by the public and that's the way that, that names that have that potential discriminatory nature would be highlighted or potentially changed? I mean, how?
So great question. And in the, in the policy, as I say, I think the policy, the bones of it were strongly lay out sort of criteria for names. And at the very end, one addition we have is the Board of Education has the ultimate authority to determine- to determine if the criteria in this policy has been satisfied. So ultimately, we have a set of criteria. And the board is the judge of whether the criteria has been met, either for keeping a name or making a decision to rename something.
But I guess I'm wondering if the names, you know, stay until there's a complaint about it, and at that point, it goes through this process? Or are we going to look systematically across the district for potential discriminatory naming?
So another great question. I think this policy gives us a framework to have that discussion. We had, because an issue had been raised in the Jefferson community about the name of that school by some community members and having a desire to have it changed. In the committee, in our Policy and Governance Committee, we talked about having a more systemic review, which is, I think, consistent with other, what other public institutions and both in the state and the country are doing right now. In the next, sort of the sprint to the end of the school year, I don't think we'll be able to do that. We will adjust, have time to adjust the policy. And then I expect that will be in the eighteen, nineteen work plan, if that's what the board and the district staff agree to.
So I had the same concerns as Director Moore expressed. And a clause that's left in, it's on the last page, Roman numeral seven, section four, says, "The name change must be supported by the school community and the community." Is that supposed to be the community at large? And how do you determine that? That seems really, what do you mean by school community? How do, what do we mean by school community? And how do we determine that the school community? And apparently, the community at large, the way it's proposed, supports the change.
So there's a couple of different ways we could address that. Again, at the end of the day, it's the board's discretion. However, we may get guidance perhaps in the administrative directive on what might be some measurements of how we might measure that?
And particularly, if there's a name that is seen by some to be discriminatory and others not. It's, we're bound to have a split opinion on that. And if there's no consensus, then there'd be no change, I think, according to this clause.
Well, I think that if there's four votes, there will be a change.
The name change must be supported by the school community. I mean, if that's in our policy, then.
Right, well, and that is.
Anyway, I.
Okay, well, we, that, great question. Maybe there's a better way to word it. And so, we can maybe wordsmith through that, so we don't have the ambiguity. So I'm going to next go to our next first reading, which is the Investment and Cash Management Policy. This was reviewed in yesterday's Finance Audit and Operations Committee. The board's required to annually review and approve this policy. There are a couple of minor revisions. And I'm going to ask Director Moore, who's the chair of that committee, to introduce the policy and any revisions that were proposed.
This is a, this is a policy that's intended to ensure that we have strict controls and accountability for the district's use of money, its investment policy. It governs where we, what kinds of financial services we're using and stipulates some guidelines on how investments need to be structured. It's a pretty dense policy, it's pretty long. Most of it, the vast majority of it, remains unchanged from past policy. There are only two changes, one of which is on page one, under the average size of the district's investment portfolio, and the high and the low. And there have been a couple of changes in the numbers. And then the other change is really a copy editing change. It deletes a sentence that is redundant. Apart from that, the policy remains unchanged.
Thank you, Director. Director Moore, any questions, comments?
I should probably add, this came before the Finance Audit and Operations Committee yesterday, and we unanimously recommended adoption.
Great. So just like the other, the last first reading, there'll be a twenty-one day public comment period. And depending on the comments we get back, we either will move ahead or make revisions once that comment period is over. And then we have yet another first reading. This, again, is with some relatively minor changes. It relates to the diploma policy in regards to veterans. And I'd like to invite Mary Kane, the Senior Leo Counsel, to introduce this item.
Good evening. So the amendments to the diploma requirements, you can see in subsection five D. It's in response to the Oregon Legislature's changes to the statute relating to high school diplomas for veterans. The, there are some additional requirements around the diploma for veterans.
So the gist of this policy generally is that.
The gist of the policy generally is that individuals who served in the armed forces and who did not, weren't able to complete their studies because they were in the service, that school districts can present them with diplomas. And so it's my understanding that this adds some additional requirements.
And also some additional opportunities. So if you resided or are currently residing in a district, you can petition for a diploma.
So a pretty, this is making a statutory change, but because it's a policy, we have to go through the standard first reading policy. So thank you, Ms. Kane.
Thank you.
And I have just an additional question for our General Counsel. When I just was looking at the overall policy, on page one and page two, there's some references to diploma requirements for the class of 2010 and class of 2011. It seems like while we're making revisions, we could just eliminate those from policy?
I agree wholeheartedly, we'll make that happen.
Great, okay. So unless there's an objection from the board, we'll do some cleanup while we're in there. Any comments or questions? Okay, so our fourth, again, that'll be, it's posted online, twenty-one days to comment. So our last policy was the one that has the most extensive revisions. You'll see in your board packets or online that the current policy is three paragraphs. And we've pretty much done a complete rewrite, so there's a new version of it in our board packet. This is a priority for the board. And as you can see from the current policy and compare it to the revisions, we've really tried to insert in the new policy sort of our beliefs about our work as a public institution and that the public has the right to be able to see how business is conducted. So the current policy is relatively short, fairly vague, and defers most policy decisions to the administrative directive, which is something that can be changed rather easily. So the revised policy before us tonight is a result of many meetings of the Board Policy and Governance Committee. Again, that's Director Rosen, Moore, and myself. And it was created with the input of community members, members of the media, the Society of Professional Journalists, our Public Records Officer, our General Counsel, and other staff. So I want to just walk through just some of the major provisions of the policy because it is all, with one exception, is all new. So it starts with a statement that in order to promote transparency and provide an accurate accounting, the district carries out the public business, that public records will be disclosed courteously and consistent with state law. So this is a reoccurring theme that our policy is anchored in state law. And the definitions from state law carry over into our policies and our practices. So another provision is that the goal is to provide records at no or minimal cost, when the records are not lengthy and do not require a significant time to locate. Again, keeping the threshold low for our community to be able to see how our business is conducted. In terms of sensitive and confidential information about students, staff, and families, we'll follow state and federal law. When there are instances when information may be considered exempt, so there's a number of exemptions in public law. But when we come to those exemptions, the policy said the district shall construe the public interest liberally in the favor of disclosure. So we're going to.
And just to be clear, those are the conditional exemptions, not the absolute exemptions.
But we're going to, the district's going to sort of default to the side of disclosure. And then the public, there's a very specific set of provisions relating to the Public Records Officer, and that they have the responsibilities of the day-to-day administration of the district's records policy. The values of timely responses, transparency of work, and minimizing costs to the public are part of the policy's guiding principles. We've also built into it an appeal to the school board if the requestor believes a record has been inappropriately withheld. So currently, requestors can go to the Multnomah County District Attorney and request an appeal. And we've added in a school board level appeal so that if somebody didn't want to go to the DA, that there's a very accessible alternative. Requestors still retain the statutory right to request a review from the DA, but this just gives an additional opportunity that hopefully isn't onerous, that's accessible. In addition, there's a provision against unlawful retaliation against individuals who make public records requests. And there's consequences for those who engage in unlawful retaliation. And finally, to avoid conflicts of interest, no employee shall make the final decision on the application of exemptions if they're named in the request. And again, this was designed so that they can assist in the records, if they're named, they can assist in the compilation or helping the district respond to the records request. They just can't make decisions around what's going to be released or not. So we tried to build in, and that was at the suggestion of the Society of Professional Journalists, we tried to build in mechanisms in which we didn't slow down the process. We kept the process moving, but also tried to create some sideboards so that there wouldn't be either the perception or an actual conflict when records were being handled. So many of the provisions in this policy, including the last one I just mentioned, were based on suggestions from community members, individuals who have made public records requests in the past. Also, members of the media commented on most of our drafts of the policy. And I think we have, after a lot of deliberation, come up with a comprehensive approach that hopefully will make our business more transparent. Any questions from the board or concerns? Director Bailey?
First, just the housekeeping, line three of section ten. If an in-house PPS attorneys, there's an S in there. It says, it should be attorney, not attorneys.
So noted.
First line of section nine, first it says, "Nobody can engage in unlawful retaliation," which, of course, in my mind, well, what about lawful retaliation, which is then addressed in the next sentence? But it seems like we can say, "Shall not engage in retaliation, unlawful or otherwise," which is the intent.
I'm more than happy to entertain that. But I, because that was something that was wordsmithed by, in consultation with counsel, I want to make sure that we're not changing the meaning. But from a layperson's perspective.
I think we're clear on the spirit. And I, we'll talk about the exact wording.
Whatever works.
Anything else?
The end of the third section, it just says, "We'll follow the state and federal law," which we've also said it seems like to ensure confidentiality is protected or something along those lines would make it a, sort of complete the thought. But that's really getting nitpicky, so, for what it's worth.
Well, I think in the spirit of, this is twenty-one days only for the public, but if you weren't on the committee, for other board members to provide suggestions. And I think we'd welcome them, so.
And thank you for all your work on all of these. It's a lot of work.
Been through a lot of drafts. And so I want to thank both the Public Records Officer and the Officer of the General Counsel for providing a lot of assistance and guidance on this.
I think a special thank you to the Society of Professional Journalists. They made some really critical suggestions that I think made it both stronger and more doable. So it was really very helpful.
Agreed. All right, so those are our four first readings. We're going to have another first reading of yet another policy the next board meeting. But next, I want to turn to the school calendar, which I know lots of parents and families are waiting for. So after the ratification of the contract, staff began working on the 2018-19 school calendar. Superintendent Guerrero has built a student-focused calendar. These changes, some changes started about two years ago to really shift, start shifting the calendar. And this year's calendar, I think, is even better. So thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. Do you want to provide, we all have a copy of it, and it's going to go to a committee tomorrow. But do you want to provide some highlights?
I'd like to preview that there are, I think, a few features in the recommended calendar for school year eighteen, nineteen. Our board has it, I know it's a hot commodity. And we've had a lot of phone calls and interest in wanting to make sure the calendar gets posted publicly as soon as it's approved, which of course, we will do. But I do want to highlight a few features. As you've mentioned, Chair Brem Edwards, hopefully, what people will notice is that this is a much more student-focused, family-friendly school calendar. We solicited input from many, many stakeholders, which gave some strong feedback about how we might evolve the school calendar. I'll call out a few features for eighteen, nineteen. The elimination of school late starts and early dismissals, for instance, in order to maintain five full instructional days as a matter of practice. And really, that was a driving force. How do we maximize uninterrupted, whole weeks of instruction wherever possible? New to the district, I would constantly hear about this "No School November" sort of slogan. And so there was a lot of interrupted instruction there in three and four-day weekends. So for the committees and the board's consideration is what would that look like if we had a full Thanksgiving week off for families to be able to plan around? So that is a feature there. Certainly, we wanted to make sure our semesters and quarters were balanced out with required instructional time. We wanted to make sure and build in our bargaining unit contracts and our recent collective bargaining agreement with Portland Association of Teachers. So those are features in there. And there were a few other considerations, like making sure we try to stay lined up with our local higher ed's calendars as well, just because we have so many university student interns that also serve in our schools. And also, we have siblings, where families are also wanting to think about that. And we want to maximize instruction prior to a lot of end-of-year assessments, like advanced placement, international baccalaureate. Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, and other assessments, and we wanted to avoid ending school on a Monday or Tuesday. We'll of course designate a few snow days, should we have to make those up at the end, but we look forward to reviewing those details with the committee at the appropriate time, and I know we'll be back with the board for approval.
Thank you Superintendent Guerrero. It's very exciting, and I know lots of people in our school community are anxiously awaiting that. We're going to refer it to the Teaching and Learning Committee, and Chair Sparza Brown has a meeting tomorrow, I believe, 5:00, that that'll be considered. So, and then that will come out of committee and be referred to the, back to the board for a final vote. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your report?
Sure. Well, I think I mentioned, since we're at Cleveland, I want to take the opportunity to highlight many good things here at Cleveland, but especially some recent events that I think are very much we want to celebrate, starting with congratulating the Cleveland Dance Team and Coach Burgess for winning the league championship this past weekend, congratulations. I also had the chance, as a former grappler myself, to head to the recent wrestling team tournament and congratulate the Cleveland Warriors and Coach Zerba for winning the PIL championship for the seventh consecutive year, congratulations. Girl soccer team with first-year head coach Emily Negan for winning the PIL title in the fall also is something I wanted to mention. Want to congratulate Cleveland junior Malcolm Asher, the state honoree of the Prudential Spirit of Community Award. Malcolm founded Art Pass, a nonprofit organization that helps hospitalized kids on four continents make and share their artworks as part of a healing process. And we have some fantastic educators here at Cleveland. Want to congratulate in particular Cleveland biology teacher Brenda Gordon, who was named Oregon Biology Teacher of the Year by the National Association of Biology Teachers. I think we've mentioned it before, but we're proud to be able to mention that again as well. I'll move to some highlights from some of, many of our other schools and programs, starting with students from our community transition program who recently traveled to Salem to testify about the benefits of the transition program in support of SB 1522, which revised to Senate Bill 20. It would have taken transition services away from students who graduate with a modified diploma. We encourage folks to check out their testimony on our webpage as part of our Pulse e-newsletter. This same program, the Community Transition Program, recently received a $5,000 grant. They plan to use those funds to install a commercial kitchen on the Green Thumb campus, and this will be used to expand their student-run business. Want to congratulate Oakley Green, 7th grader Edith Crever, whose winning artwork became the official poster for the PDX Jazz Festival, which wrapped up over the weekend. And definitely want to congratulate the Jefferson High Boys Basketball Team and Coach Strickland for winning the league tournament, best of luck at state. And a big thank you to the Trail Blazers, especially star point guard CJ McCollum and Mo Harkless, who took a break from their recent winning streak to sponsor a trip with many of our high school Black Student Union students to see the new Marvel blockbuster Black Panther. The players paid for tickets, bus transportation, and popcorn, and we had a great time this past Sunday afternoon. Well, we had some interesting weather last week, four days of weather events. Tuesday, we called an early release. Wednesday, we closed schools. We were up through the night and early morning. Thursday, we decided to go with a two-hour late start, which we communicate, in all of these days, did our best to try to communicate our decisions and tried to keep instruction as preserved as possible while keeping student safety foremost. We learned some lessons around transportation and how to make sure those snow routes were clear in cooperation with the city. I want to thank everyone for their patience and understanding. Sometimes these decisions are a bit unpredictable, but I think we did okay and we got through those. So I want to thank everyone who was staying up late and getting up way before sunrise to make sure we were making the best decision possible on behalf of the safety of our students. The general feedback was rather positive that we got it right this time. International Youth Leadership Conference, last Friday I had the chance to attend and share a keynote message at this annual event, celebrating youth leaders hosted at Portland State University. Want to thank the organizers of that for making this annual event possible for many of our students of color. New hires at PPS, we continue to build our leadership team out. We have now, working amongst us, three financial experts, a returning former PPS superintendent, interim CFO Jeff Jim Scherzinger, who's with us, interim budget director Ryan Dutcher is back for another tour, and supported by Ashley Gunter of the Gunter Group, who's serving as a senior financial strategist as well. We're also adding capacity in our communications department with bringing aboard Stephanie Cameron, who will be working as senior director for communications, starting later this week. And I also want to congratulate Dr. Luis Valentino, who has accepted the position as our permanent chief academic officer. He will continue to work with the team, focused on articulating a curriculum, scope, and sequence for this coming school year. So thank you to the new team members who continue to build our capacity as a school system. And I too didn't want to end my report today without also reflecting out loud on recent events. We heard earlier from PAT President Suzanne Cohen, and I very much echo many of the sentiment expressed, and I feel like we have to say and do something about these recent horrific shootings that occurred at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School, and how we as a district are intending to respond and process and give our students a forum and our educators an opportunity to reflect on these occasions. No student, no educator should ever feel unsafe or fear a danger that understand, a danger that coming to work or to school could result in anything but a positive teaching and learning experience. We are witnessing just how important also at the same time student voices can be when they are raised, in this case, to promote nonviolence and to speak out about factors out there that are really infringing on their education and general civility. Various groups in response have begun to discuss and schedule marches and other possible student actions, in some cases surrounding the specific issue of gun violence in schools. We are definitely proceeding in a spirit of collaboration and working on suggestions so that we might offer guidance and guidelines to share with our students, our school leaders, and our school communities and families, starting with any proposed activities on March 14th, which has been identified as an opportunity for schools around the country to reflect on and to think of how we might make a statement about the importance of safe schools. So we are encouraging schools to find ways to respect and support a student voice in this process. We are encouraging our educators to take this teachable moment, to engage in classroom discussion, to allow students to reflect on this important issue and the impact of gun violence in schools with an eye towards solutions and actions. We will encourage our schools and our leaders to take a visible action, certainly for the 17 minutes proposed in honor of the 17 high school students and educators who lost their lives. We anticipate that parents and families, many of whom who have written me recently, to join in on any school-wide activities that demonstrate our commitment to nonviolence and school safety, and I look forward to working with our teachers' association, our board, and community stakeholders, in how we intend to demonstrate our commitment to schools free of the danger of violence. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Guerrero.
Thank you.
So next, we have our public comment period, and I'd like to review our guidelines. We appreciate the community coming this evening and sharing their perspectives and their concerns. We value the comments that we receive as it informs our work. The responsibility of the board is to actively listen. A quick reminder that the board, board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public comment. Guidelines for public comments emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share comments, begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record, and during the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When there's one minute remaining, a yellow light will come on, and when your time's up, a red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. So we appreciate your input, and with that, I would like to ask Ms. Hewson, sorry, I can barely see you, for, to call the first two individuals for public comment. I'm going to apologize in advance, the just difference in height, it's just, I guess what it is, it's a little bit awkward.
Okay, our first two speakers, Kate O'Malley and Trevon Braswell.
My last name is spelled O-M-A-L-L-E-Y, and, good evening. School board directors and Superintendent Guerrero, my name is Kate O'Malley, and I'm the mother of two Portland High School students with very different learning styles. One is at St. Mary's Academy, and one is at Mount Scott Learning Center. And, pardon me, the reason I'm here is I just would like to thank all of you for supporting contracted educational option programs like Mount Scott for students who don't always fit the mold. Super important. Thank you. I might just go over here, I'm sorry, in advance, but I couldn't trim anything from here, but, so my son's high school experience began at Lincoln, and even though he's quite bright and in the tag program, he was giving it his best effort, but he was just sinking into academic hole and emotional. On the outside, everything appeared fine, but on the inside, he battles with slow processing speed, ADD, and anxiety, and, you know, what can take one student an hour can take him three hours, and so these factors were just compounded, deteriorating self-esteem, surrounding himself with others that were struggling, and it turns out that, you know, being gifted with learning differences, you know, it can create the perfect storm for just dysfunctional academic environments in the public school. And, so, you know, I did my research, and after I was waitlisted at Edison High School, I was just super grateful to find Mount Scott, and they offer educational options for students with built-in modifications. They have met his academic level, they've met his pace, and it's proven just to be a winning combination. He's making great progress, he's ahead in credits, his confidence has increased, he's self-advocating on a regular basis, and in the classroom, he benefits from smaller, shorter workloads, lots of engaging class discussions, and he's also not under-challenged at all. He's taking high-level classes like physics and economics and trigonometry, probability statistics, something that at a bigger, faster, more accelerated school would have outpaced him. And Mount Scott has also been very supportive of his credit recovery process by encouraging his attendance at Summer Scholars. The staff there, Lenise is one of the transition specialists, and she even called him at home the night before, was there to greet him and other students on their first day, I mean, just amazing staff, so-
I'm going to ask you to wrap, but also, you can also submit- Your full statement for all of us to read.
Yes, I'm at the very, very, very end here. Just wanted to say that they do, Mount Scott does have one of the highest retention rates in the district, of over 90% of their seniors are graduating, and that's a figure that can't be achieved without these contracted educational option programs. And just please keep supporting programs like Mount Scott and stay true to your public mission to support all students in achieving their very highest educational and personal potential. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Trevon Braswell, that's B-R-A-S-W-E-L-L. I'm a proud graduate of Mount Scott Learning Center, and I want to thank the board and the superintendent for supporting successful contracted education programs such as Mount Scott. My childhood left me fighting for a character I could label as my own, as I had no father in the picture, and my mother was gone working doubles daily to support my brother and I. And as high school came around, I had little to no confidence and no self-image, and I would mirror anybody I thought was popular. In my environment, the majority of those people happened to be those who were engaged. It's truly a surprise that I was even able to pass my freshman year, and a big surprise and accomplishment as well that my mother got to watch me walk as I got my diploma. As a student, I was already below my average, as my work ethic was little to none. I didn't know how to ask for help, I didn't know that I had a voice or at least one worth being heard, and I never believed my ceiling for potential was even there until Mount Scott showed me that I was standing under the wrong roof and that my ceiling, it had no limitations. Since leaving Mount Scott with the confidence and CEO mindset I needed to succeed in life, I've been working different jobs from serving to being an assistant acting teacher. I've been taking courses at Portland Community College, and from the unmotivated scholar I once was, they helped me shift my mindset, and I have transformed that work ethic and gone from a 2.6 GPA in high school to sitting comfortably at a 3.7 in college. Also, in my second term at college, I got to go and travel India for three months in a study abroad program I wouldn't have been in had it not been for a counselor at Mount Scott. Had the school not been able to push me to stretch my comfort zone, I would have never embarked on a journey that honestly changed my life in the course of where I was headed. When it comes to finding a career, I want to work with youth who are walking in shoes similar to mine and inspire them like my mentors at Mount Scott did for me, but I also yearn to travel more in my life, and I wish I could have my mindset on just one career, but I honestly believe that's because of Mount Scott that I'm able to dream bigger and see myself doing more than just one thing. In closing, I want to thank the board and the superintendent for allowing Mount Scott, Mrs. O'Malley, and myself to come in here and have our voices heard and to share our testimonies, so thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you both for sharing your stories.
Next, we have Huck Wilken and Stacy Stenzel.
Good evening, thank you for your time, board members and superintendent. My name is Huck Wilken, W-I-L-K-E-N. I'm a 7th and 8th grade middle school math teacher at Caesar Chavez in North Portland. After nine years of teaching middle school math in Title I, I have some ideas on completely revamping the whole educational experience, but I do only have three minutes, so I'm here just to give you some feedback on the CTE program, the Career Technology Exploration Program, from the ground level. This is a program, if you're familiar, it's- This is a program, if you're familiar, it's every seventh grader in Portland Public gets to go for four hours a day for three days, and they go on a field trip to a hands-on STEM-oriented experience where they are participating, creating something. I've been on this, from the pilot stage, I believe, for the last three years. I have seen some amazing things, students who slept right through my math class, and their eyes just opened wide when you turn on a bandsaw. I've had students who could not stop talking, just go speechless at the Northwest Film Center when they saw a blue, a green screen. And kids who can't sit still in my class, they would stand at Hedron grinding their welding for an hour, just so carefully grinding their metal for an hour. These hands-on experiences are amazing, we get to see a side of students we don't get to see often. They are, they're actually doing something, even though they're at school. So, the Career Technology Exploration is succeeding, uh-oh, in providing a much-needed hands-on educational experience. However, it's lost on our students for several reasons. The first one is, it's three days out of three years. Our students need daily exposure to hands-on stuff like this. It actually disconnects education from hands-on. We've got to go take a field trip to get our hands-on experience, okay? It also disrupts the whole rest of the school. Other classes get one day on either end, you get an hour at each, it just is a week that's gone. I would like you please prioritize middle school hands-on opportunities. Call it STEM, call it Makerspace, call it whatever, call it shop, but our students need daily exposure to tactile, project-based education.
Hi, my name's Stacy Stenzel, last name spelled S-T-E-N-Z-E-L, and I'm here this evening because I am the mother of two nine-year-olds who attend Portland Public Schools, and one of them has exceptional healthcare needs. We use the label cerebral palsy generally to refer to her. And if we don't talk about things that aren't going well or aren't working, then how can we ever expect them to be any better? And one of the struggles that she has significantly faced in being able to attend school is related to the care that she needs that is supposed to be provided by MESD. It was decided about two years ago that she needed one-on-one nursing in order to be able to attend school safely. And I said, "Great, sure, okay, let's do that then." And that works out pretty well if the nurse shows up. But unfortunately, in the second week of the school year this year, the nurse fell and broke her foot, because she's human, and that happens sometimes, right? And so I called MESD, and the receptionist said, "Oh, I don't know, we'll have to get you in touch with the supervisor." And I talked to the supervisor, and the supervisor says, "Sorry, we don't have anyone who can support your daughter. We're short-staffed." So my daughter can't go to school unless somebody else goes and assumes the liability of her care, which that somebody would be me, because MESD failed to hire enough people or manage their staff to be able to support my daughter. And so, as then I faced this challenge of how I'm going to get my daughter to school safely without me going and cramping her style, she, I started talking to other people, and I discovered that my daughter is not the only child who is not being able to attend school because of their medical needs and the failure of management or hiring to employ people to support children at school because of these medical needs. And so, that's really why I'm here, because too often, we just get upset at that supervisor, or we just get upset at that receptionist, and we don't effectively complain, we don't draw attention to the fact that it's somewhere there has to be some accountability in order to help these children be able to attend school.
So of note, later this evening, we're having a presentation by MESD, so it's very timely. Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Stephanie Chase and Neera Elmagbari.
I have to put my jacket on, it's so cold in here.
It's because there's a warm shelter under here with air vents.
Oh.
Yeah, all the metal.
Do you want to go first, do you want me to go first?
Go ahead.
Okay.
We know where to come now.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Chase, it's spelled C-H-A-S-E, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the proposal to effectively close the Pioneer School program. At past meetings, you've heard from many Pioneer parents and staff, none of whom agree with this plan. I am also a Pioneer parent. You heard my son Henry, an eighth-grade student at Pioneer, speak at your January 23rd board meeting. Tonight, though, I want to bring the unique perspective I have to this discussion, and that's of a bureaucrat. As the municipal public library director for the city of Hillsborough, I have for much of the past 17 years occupied a position equivalent to your superintendent, including reporting to a board. I understand that constant tension between an organization's chief executive and the board, as the board must allow that chief executive to lead the day-to-day operations of the organization, and must trust that the chief executive will carry out the strategies approved by the board. But I also know that the ultimate fiscal responsibility of an organization relies with the board, and that the board is also charged with overseeing the work of that chief executive. I ask you, as someone familiar with the position you are in as board members, to step in now and provide the check and balance needed to your organization. The decision by PPS to remove the Pioneer School program from the Holiday Youngson Campus is shortsighted and fiscally disastrous. You are proposing to remove at great cost the most vulnerable population in your district from a building that was originally designed for students with disabilities and retrofitted to suit the current population. The list of what makes the Holiday Youngson Campus unique is long, and I know if you've received that list from us Pioneer parents, but I just want to highlight a few items. Wide hallways for the safe passage of staff and students if a student needs to de-escalate, de-escalation in therapy rooms, windows set low to the ground with non-breakable glass, the wide circular shape of Holiday Youngson, which allows students to move independently and yet remain supervised, large bathrooms with line of sight and which include adult-sized changing facilities. There is no question that it will be expensive to even begin to replicate the elements of the Pioneer program that are unique, and even if the district intends to provide the sufficient budget to replicate that program in two new buildings, there is not enough time to do so before the start of the new school year. Our students will be returning to class in six months, and we are supposed to believe that Rhodes City Park will be ready, the Holiday Youngson Campus will be ready, and that Applegate and Rice, both of which need substantial improvements even without the retrofitting, will all be complete. We have yet to see a budget for these projects, and I've worked in municipal government long enough to know it would be a miraculously fast pace to get any one of them done in six months, never mind all four. It would take more time than I have to even begin to address the other incredibly expensive and much more difficult element of this plan, the increase in staff needed to maintain the federally mandated continuum of services to students. I serve nearly a million people a year in my libraries, and do so in an institution beloved by many, and for whom most people have a passionate and sentimental attachment. I understand how difficult it is to balance the wants of multiple competing groups, but I also know that I would be failing in my job if I placed the wants of one group over the needs of a vulnerable population, and I would expect my board to step in and tell me that decision is wrong. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Neera Elmagbari, last name's E-L-M-A-G-B-A-R-I, and I apologize, I can't feel my fingers, so. Like I said, my name's Neera Elmagbari, and Superintendent Guerrero and board, thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm a mother, a teacher, and a director of the Portland Refugee Support Group. I'm here tonight to share with you how absolutely excited I am about the new and much-needed Arabic immersion program, and to tell you that you have my full support as a community leader and advocate for minority populations. As someone who works very closely with the Arab community, refugees, immigrants, and others, I can tell you firsthand that nothing is more important than the ability to communicate with and understand each other. Language is essential to coexistence, and giving students the chance to learn a language as profound and rich as Arabic is an amazing opportunity for children of all backgrounds. I can think of two current cases I am working on that would have benefited so greatly from this program. One, an immigrant mother who last month lost her husband to the flu. She struggles to communicate with her daughter, whose Arabic is very limited and is more comfortable speaking English. Mom speaks no English at all. It broke my heart to see mom asking others to interpret between herself and her daughter. If the child was in a program like this, these hardships could have been avoided. The second, an 11-year-old Syrian refugee who speaks Arabic but is struggling to learn English. He has begun to show aggressive behavior towards his classmates. The teacher told me that he was doing this because of the frustration he felt not being able to express himself to the other children. We have seen the success of other immersion programs here in Portland, and I truly believe that we will have the same results with this program. We all know through evidence-based research that children who take part in immersion programs are more likely to achieve high academic success. They possess greater cognitive ability, longer attention spans, greater memory recall, and amazing problem-solving skills, in addition to developing a greater understanding and appreciation for their own native language. I have seen the success of dual-language programs firsthand, and there is nothing more mind-blowing to me than seeing and hearing a child eloquently expressing themselves in one language, and then, like with the flip of a switch, speak in another language as if he or she was born with it. Thinking about the future of our country, I can only imagine how wonderful it would be if we were able to offer more programs like this and open the doors for our children to learn as much as they can about the world we live in simply by learning another language. I am honored to be here tonight to share my message with you, and I look forward to the amazing work and outcomes of this program. As children of immigrants here in America, my native tongue is Arabic, and I struggled with it all my life and fought to learn it, and thought to myself, "If only I had a program like this when I was a child." I would have loved to learn my own language in a way that was fun and with other children who could appreciate me, and I could appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening and sharing your stories and perspectives and concerns. So next, at the last board meeting, the board received a presentation on the open enrollment process, and we highlighted the possibility of board action at the last meeting. Director Bailey, as the chair of the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee, can you introduce this topic?
Thank you, Director Rem Edwards. So we're talking about Resolution 5576. So I'm going to wait a second if people are leaving. Okay. In 2011, the state legislature passed a law that allowed every district to have an open enrollment period. The districts need to decide by the first of March whether to engage in this. And what this does, previously, for students in one district to be able to transfer to another district, both districts had to agree to it, and that's the way it is through most of the year. But state law now provides for districts to have an open enrollment period, in which a student from another district can apply to transfer to that district without approval of their home district. It requires a couple of things, including that if they transfer into a program, that there would be room in that program that no student, for example, in Portland Public Schools would be displaced by that, it's only for extra room. Portland Public has done that at least once in the past, and that was to allow students to transfer from other districts into the Vietnamese immersion program and the Russian immersion program. So what's on the table would allow, or would be the approval of Portland Public Schools having an open enrollment period this spring. It would last for a month in which students from other districts could apply to be in select programs and schools in Portland Public. It would include, oh, and by the way, we lose about 100 students a year to other districts through them having an open enrollment process. What's being proposed is for 50 slots at Harriet and Tubman Middle School and 25 slots at the Jefferson Middle College as part of our Return to Albina Initiative, and in addition, 25 slots at the Kelly Russian Immersion Program, and 20 slots at the Rhodes City Park Vietnamese Immersion Program. And again, if students from other districts apply for this, there would be a lottery, we would be, current Portland Public School students would have first dibs at those programs, and only extra unfilled spaces would be open to schools from other districts. I'm going to ask Director Moore to talk a little bit more about the Return to Albina Initiative, which she and Director Sparza Brown have been working on with community
So we have been speaking with members of the African-American community, representing communities that have been displaced because of gentrification from the Albina District. And our goal was to establish a mechanism that would align with some other initiatives that are happening, especially around housing through the Portland City Government, that would allow families with historical ties to the Albina District to take advantage of the new opportunities at the reopened Tubman Middle School, and then articulate into Jefferson High School. And I'd like to invite Ronnie Herndon, who can speak to the efforts that the community members have made. It's been, I think, a really, a really great partnership that I hope will kind of just be the first step in a longer-term continuing good partnership as we go forward. So, would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you. Last name Herndon, H-E-R-N-D-O-N. Is this what it looks like when you try to get into heaven and all the old news? Setting up, taking notes, checking your book. Thank you for the dress rehearsal. We appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of this effort, and for me, it's always important, as a preamble, to distinguish between gentrification and redlining. Gentrification means that you have the dough to go into a community and buy a property. Black people moved out because of redlining, specifically that the instruments, the financial instruments that were available to those in the white community to purchase property or to upgrade property were not made available in the black community. As a matter of fact, the Portland Realtors Code said that if a realtor sold property outside of a very prescribed area to black people, they would lose their license. So this is not just gentrification, these are racist policies that were put in place to confine the black community a very specific area, and they were not able to get the resources that would allow them to own property to develop equity. And moving forward, we congratulate the effort of Director Moore, Director Sparza Brown, in trying to develop this policy. And additionally, the reason that I feel it's extraordinarily important is at the same time that redlining was occurring, Portland Public Schools was dispersing black children. They were the only... They were the only children in this city who were bused mandatorily for certain academic purposes. So, the number of children, we hope, that can come back will increase. But we certainly do support the effort as it is now and look forward to working with you to work out the details and certainly, certainly do appreciate the support that Superintendent Guerrero has given to this effort and his public support of this effort. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herndon. I think this was, it was our first board meeting of the new board that you and other community members came and asked us to do this work. So, it's gratifying tonight that we can at least make the down payment on the first part of this effort. Thank you for your continued efforts, because I know this has been a decades-long work by you and others in the community. So, thank you.
And I just want to point out that there was a study just very recently released from across the nation looking at lending practices around housing to people of color and found just major discrimination still exists, and it's 30, 40 years after the community, the CRA was passed, and here we are.
And can I just, well, I just want to, sorry. I just want to point out that this is a very short window for people to apply. The application period starts tomorrow, not tomorrow, March 1st, which is day after tomorrow, and ends March 31st. So, anybody who is interested or knows anybody who is interested or would be interested, please make sure that they get their applications in on time, and there is assistance available in filling out the forms.
Did you want to say something, Julie?
No.
Okay. So, the board will now consider Resolution Number 5576, which is for open enrollment transfers of the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Director Sparza Brown and seconded by Director Bailey. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? There's no public comment. Is there any further board discussion on the resolution? If not, the board will now vote on Resolution 5576. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The motion on Resolution 5576 passes by a seven-to-zero vote with Student Rep. Tran voting yes. So, we're looking forward to the continued partnership. At this time, we are now going to have a presentation by one of our partners, and I'm going to ask Director Anthony to be on point for this agenda item.
Each year, the board is asked to approve the Multnomah Education Service District's Local Service Plan. The MESD is, its function is to coordinate services and purchasing for all of the districts in Multnomah County. In particular, the Local Service Plan governs the many, many alternative programs the MESD coordinates, including Helen's View High School. It deals with our school nurses and many, many, many different types of purchasing, including IT and a great many of our IT services. I'd like to invite Sam Brier, the superintendent from the MESD, to provide a report on their 2018-19 plan.
Excellent, thank you.
Keep talking.
Yeah, it'll come on if I keep talking. Thanks, okay. Good evening, board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the Local Service Plan as it's coming up. I am Sam Brier. I am superintendent of Multnomah Education Service District. I am in my second year as superintendent there. Prior to that, I was superintendent in Centennial School District, worked in assessment and school improvement, and was an elementary principal and a teacher. And prior to that, which is why I gave the long list, I actually was trained and worked in the area of economics, and I share that because my work at MESD is kind of a perfect marriage of my two passions of financial fiscal efficiency and making sure kids are supported to success as much as possible. In my new role as superintendent at MESD, the question I am most often, almost immediately asked whenever I introduce myself in that way, is what exactly is it that you all do? And I appreciate Director Anthony and his brief explanation of that. My goal tonight is to quickly describe the mission of ESDs so you understand, talk about how MESD implements those practices and how it directly applies to Portland Public, and in that, be incredibly clear how the Local Service Plan in front of you comes to be and what it means for you. And I hope to do all of that in less than 10 minutes, because I know you're very busy and would be happy to answer any questions. So, ESDs exist in state statute. They're an evolution of the old county school system in the state of Oregon. In the statute, ESDs have a very defined mission of providing equitable, high-quality, cost-effective, locally-responsive services at a regional level. In that, we are tasked with providing services in four specific areas, which are programs for children with special needs, including those who need services in special education or are at-risk, technology services, school improvement services, and administrative services. There's also a clause in there that we can and should provide other services that are identified as critical to the region. We do that through a process that is collaborative with our component school districts. We serve eight school districts in Multnomah County, including, of course, Portland Public. And there is an annual process to develop the services that we offer in those areas. And that's a constant, ongoing process with our component school districts, including representatives from Portland Public, where it is presented to us the services that the region needs. We explore our ability to offer those, be transparent about costing, and produce this document. So, the document in front of you is the ongoing work of multiple practitioners working through this around regional need. This is an ongoing document that we revise annually, and this is the first phase in the Local Service Plan process. At this point, the Board of MESD, which is a publicly-elected board, must approve the Local Service Plan, and then each of our component districts must approve. Technically, the statute says at least two-thirds, representing the majority of students that you serve, should approve, but we go for 100% for obvious reasons. Within that, this then leads us into the second phase, which is where we start the budgeting process. We have a meeting, for example, tomorrow with the regional business managers to be transparent about what we believe the costing will be, so our districts can feed that into their budgeting process. As part of that, I want to be transparent about how we, as an agency, are funded, so it can help inform your choices. We do, we are part of the local property tax system, which feeds money into the state, and then ESDs are allocated a percentage of the state school fund to deliver services to the region. We at Multnomah ESd, and this goes back to the economics, we operate in almost a market system. It's not quite, because we're given the money, but we distribute that money out to all of the school districts for them to choose how they would like to use it with us or not. So, the Local Service Plan that is in front of you is actually the representative of an entire menu system. By approving this does not mean you have selected any of these services. You, as a district, can choose to select as many or as few as you would like. In addition to that, that comprises about 60% to two-thirds, depending on the year, of our overall funding and service, but we also offer those services to districts outside of the area, and they pay an additional 10% fee, which we use to lower the costs for you and create economies of scale. We also operate state-contracted services for at-risk youth, for example, incarcerated youth, students who are in long-term care and treatment programs, or students who are served in hospital programs. All of those students have right to educational service while they are not at their home school. We administer those contracts as well. The third thing that we are working on as I've stepped into this role is making sure that we are supporting regional conversations so that we know that many of the students in Multnomah County move and operate between our school districts. It's the benefit of all of us if our school districts are cooperating on that. And so, we're convening those conversations regularly, and I did want to represent to the board that, as he's come on board, I've appreciated Superintendent Guerrero's engagement in those conversations and his push to make sure that we're spending our time regionally talking about how we create the best comprehensive education program for our kids. So, I know you're hearing that within your district, but also across the region. It's a really important piece. Quickly, in summary for what all of that means for Portland Public, we did prepare a simple one-pager here, which I believe you have, one side of it, and if you don't, I have copies.
I do not believe you do.
Okay. This was an attempt to just capture in very short form what it means for Portland Public. So, on one side, you will see the financial information. What this basically summarizes is that, as a district, simply by MESD existing, you have access to an additional almost $22 million worth of money to spend on services to students. Your district, this goes back to the menu approach, currently, in the current year, spends about $13.3 million on services, but also takes $8.5 million in cash directly out, which you then allocate within your own budget cycle. You'll also see there a three-year trend, as well as a breakdown of where you spend your money on services and the percentage thereof. On the back side is a quick summary of the programs, and I will not read it to you, but just a few highlights. Helen's View High School was mentioned earlier. You do have currently 123 students attending there, and I did want to let you know, that school has undergone significant work to increase the quality of the offering for students, to make sure they're remaining engaged. And we did recently receive a CTE revitalization grant to increase the career and technical offerings there. So, those are students who are pregnant and parenting teens or have experienced dropout or chronic absence or behavior issues. And so, having them embedded directly in career technical experience is incredibly valuable, and we're seeing positive outcomes from that. Additionally, we do offer a number of special education services across the region, and Portland Public does take advantage of that. School Health Services is your largest service purchase area, and Portland Public actually, in recent years, has undergone some really innovative work around how to best offer school health services in your schools, recognizing the increasing complexity of medical needs for our students and implementing the School Health Assistant Program, which is really a model that other districts are starting to look at, because it increases the coverage and support for students experiencing medical needs at schools, while also recognizing that it's impossible to fund and support, at this time unfortunately, a nurse existing in every school. Finally, just the last thing I would mention is, we do offer technology services, and we are in a consortium called the Cascade Technology Alliance with four other ESDs, including the three largest ESDs in the state, representing more than half of the students served. And that allows us to provide high-quality services at scale, technology, it makes sense, that increases the ability to buy efficiently and more cheaply, rather than each individual district having those contracts. So, an excellent example of that is a student information system. Rather than each district contracting, we do purchase that regionally, and it lowers the price. And we are speaking currently with Portland Public about some potential other offerings there that would help you operate more efficiently in that area as well. So, that is my quick, speedy overview of what we offer. In front of you is the longer narrative version, and I would be happy to answer any questions the board has about services, presentation, or the Local Service Plan itself.
So, I don't know if you were here earlier when we had public comment.
I was. Yeah. I fully expected that question to come up, so I just didn't want to assume. So, I can answer in the general and will pledge to you that I will look into the specific immediately upon returning to the agency tomorrow. So, the first thing I would say is, we do offer the most robust school health services in the state. We're recognized for that because we have extensive nursing support that schools in Multnomah County experience that they experience almost nowhere else in the state. One of the challenges of that is, we also are experiencing a critical shortage of school nurses. And so, the staffing in that area has been something we've been working on throughout the year, and so, it's not surprising that we had a staffing experience. However, it's unacceptable that we've had a staffing challenge that has kept a student out of school for an extended period of time. So, I acknowledge that to you and pledge to you that I will look into what's going on there and make sure that we fix that.
Thank you. Follow-up question. You provide an incredible array of very complex services, so thank you for that. Just curious, are there services that other ESDs provide that you don't?
That's a great question. Because of the local nature of the Local Service Plan, each region looks at the services that are most critical to their district. So, as one example, in many areas of the state, the ESD does payroll-back-office services for districts. We serve five of the 20 largest districts, six of the 30 largest districts, including the largest district, so that's not a specific demand here. However, through the cooperative work that we do, if another ESD has a service that we don't provide, we attempt to link our districts to that to make sure that they receive that. And then, we, as I mentioned earlier, provide that for districts in other regions. For example, there are some services we provide that Clackamas ESD doesn't provide, and so, their districts are able to contract with us.
And I want to recognize the geographic diversity as well. Florence isn't in Multnomah.
I appreciate you calling that out. So, that is a budget complexity. In order for us to spend money on something, it has to be reflected in the Local Service Plan, and the state contract that we hold to serve incarcerated youth includes a facility in Albany at Oak Creek Correctional Facility and a facility in Florence. So, that's how that came to be.
And finally, at some point, I think it would be educational for me and maybe for other board members as well, to see what are the services that we take advantage of? What are the areas that we do in-house? And also, in terms of, a lot of the services you provide are around students with special educational needs. We've talked about our continuum of care in that area to how MESD is a partner in that with us.
I can certainly share that Superintendent Brier and I have continued to have these conversations around, as he mentioned earlier, soliciting the local superintendents around what is the array of services that we want to enhance. And the more we've been diving into this topic about supporting our students and their varied needs, you know, we want to make sure and see if there's a central way that we might avail ourselves of a service that, as I talk to my peer superintendents in Multnomah, are challenges for them as well. So, some readiness-to-learn issues, some health-related issues. You'll notice that over the last couple of years, certainly our school health services commitment with MESD has gone up significantly, and yet, there's still a greater need still. So, you know, this is part of the process, and we'll continue voicing sort of our need for that kind of continuum of services.
I spent some time in Helen's View.
Guess you have.
And really know the kinds of unique placements for students that haven't been successful in other, in our schools. So, I really appreciate the array of services, and in particular, that population of students have successful, that school has been in getting kids to graduate and to think of their future, you know, to give them skills for that, too. So, good work.
Thank you for that. I'm pleased to represent an incredibly dedicated staff, that their heart is in filling in those gaps for students who haven't been successful in other settings, and glad to be in partnership with districts in that.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm going to ask a really detailed question that you may actually not have the answer to.
I will take notes and get you the answer if I do.
And it's based on what you just gave us. So, the outdoor school program, which, by the way, probably got my kid through high school. So, it's listed as 3696 students, PPS students. Does that include the high school contingent or just the middle schoolers?
That's an excellent question. I believe it is just the students who experience it, not necessarily the counselor, the high school students who supported it, but I can confirm and get that information back to you.
I think that, I think the high school contingent is really important. My kid is not the only one I know who was essentially... My kid is not the only one I know who was essentially saved by outdoor school. It was like the only activity that engaged him even slightly. And he learned an incredible amount about himself, and he developed skill. It was a great experience, and I know most of his friends did the same thing. So I think you should take credit for that, too.
I appreciate that. And I mentioned earlier, the most common thing I'm asked is, what exactly is it that you do? The second most common thing I get is, oh, you guys do outdoor school. That's what everyone knows and is incredibly important to people.
And just as a very quick comment, to give a greater sense of urgency to our need for more school nurses. And if there is any way that the board or the district could work with you to get more, we would dearly love to know that. The burden that that lack puts on our students, our teachers, especially on our counselors, is enormous.
I absolutely agree, and we're working aggressively on the recruiting side of that. And I actually do believe your School Health Assistant approach and that program that your district has created has been an innovative way to deal with at least a portion of that challenge. But I appreciate the offer, and we will connect and do work closely with your staff on those issues.
And I think that that will continue to be an issue. As I have a daughter who is a nurse, and, you know, when they think about their financial outlook, they have many other options rather than school nursing. So again, anything educational, it's really looking for how we can advocate and look for better funding for our professionals and think outside the box and come up with some solutions for partial part of the problem.
Absolutely. We're even working with nursing programs to embed the concept of school nursing in their programs because typically what we experience is people who have not appreciated the hospital lifestyle entering school nursing.
There's no midnight shifts at school nursing.
Exactly.
That is a bonus.
Anyone else? Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
And if you can, either superintendent's office or the board office manager to provide the responses. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
The ones that are outstanding. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
The board will now consider resolution number five-five-seven-seven, the annual MSD district resolution process. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Bailey. Let's see, Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? There's not. Any board discussion? All right. Then, at this time, we're going to vote on resolution five-five-seven-seven. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Student Rep. Tran?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero with Representative Tran... I'm sorry, six to zero with Student Representative Tran voting yes. So thank you. Then, the next item we had on our agenda was board consideration of a Step Three complaint. We've mutually agreed with the complainant that we are going to defer the vote on whether the board will hear the complaint or deferring it to the March sixth board meeting. And it'll be a regular agenda item on at that time. So this evening, we will not be hearing that issue. So next up, we have the Board Committee and Conference Reports and the Student Representative Report. So since we last met, there's been a host of meetings. I'm going to ask, we've had Finance Audit and Operations Committee, a Health, Safety and Accessibility Committee meeting, and a Policy and Governance Committee meeting. The Policy and Governance Committee, the first readings tonight were really the product of that committee's work, so I'm not going to cover any of that. Director Rosen or Director Moore, would you like to provide an update on your committee?
Finance Audit and Operations Committee was scheduled to meet last week, but we were snowed out. So we met yesterday afternoon. We received a preliminary overview of the school staffing. And you'll be hearing more about that as time goes on. We also heard about transportation and nutrition services. We've experienced some real improvement in the transportation services. And we're looking at how to continue the improvement going forward. We're in discussions with our current contracted service provider, and we're looking at all of our options. Nutrition services, we got a report about the community eligibility program provision, which is a federal program that allows the entire school, under certain circumstances, to be considered eligible for free and reduced lunch. And if you... People may remember that at the beginning of the school year, a lot of schools were notified that they were no longer eligible for that. So we've had to use the more traditional free and reduced lunch process. And it's looking like, given changes in district demographics, that more schools are going to be losing that designation. So the affected schools will be hearing later this spring about what families need to do in order to maintain free and reduced lunch for their students. And the board will continue to be kind of kept current about all of that. And...
Director Moore, could you clarify? And this is something that came up in the committee meeting, the difference between the school-wide and individual students at the school receiving... being eligible to receive meals.
Right. The community eligibility provision is based on a school reaching a particular threshold established by the feds for students who are directly certified, who are certified using a direct certification process, which is... Which means students are... Students' families are receiving state aid, in particular, food stamps, and therefore would qualify for free and reduced lunch status. If a school population exceeds the established threshold, then the entire school is allowed... is considered eligible for free and reduced lunch. If a school loses that designation, individual students continue to be eligible... who qualify, continue to be eligible to receive free and reduced lunch. The difference is that if you lose CEP status, individual families then have to apply for free and reduced lunch eligibility. It's somewhat more cumbersome. It requires that the schools be much more kind of proactive in reaching out to families to make sure that all of the eligible students have... submit the paperwork that allows them to continue to receive the benefits. But I guess the takeaway is no student who qualifies under federal regulations for a free or reduced lunch will lose that status. It's incumbent on the district and the schools and families to follow through on the paperwork to make sure that all the students who can receive benefits do. Did that make sense?
Director Rosen?
Just a quick update. We met on February fifteenth, and we got an update on the individual health, safety and accessibility elements like lead and water and paint and asbestos. And that whole remediation process seems to be going well. We're looking forward to the Bond Stakeholder Advisory Group being brought back together sometime in the month of March. I'm thinking it's probably the end of March to look at the health, safety and accessibility strategy. And we're meeting again on March fourteenth, where we'll probably be looking at the health, safety and accessibility strategy, hopefully. And we'll also be getting a presentation on potential health effects of exposure to Wi-Fi.
Thank you. Because of the snow, I know both the Charter Committee that Director Anthony chairs and the Teaching and Learning Committee here in... Meeting have been... At least the TNL Committee has been rescheduled till tomorrow at five o'clock. So we'll have another group of items coming to the board after that committee meets. Director Anthony, do you want to just provide an update of what was going to happen in the Charter Committee and the sort of path forward for those charters?
The Charter Committee members have received the superintendent's recommendations for charter renewals. We were going to be hearing those and then discussing them. In the event, we really, I think, had a unanimity of opinion and have dispensed with that particular meeting. The recommendations will be coming straight to the board with the committee's unanimous recommendation that we follow the superintendent's recommendations.
So maybe one thing to add on that is, I think, one area that the committee looked at is the question of sort of the diversity of the student populations in some of those charters. And they don't necessarily reflect the diversity of our overall school populations. And there is a weighted lottery option that's available to charter schools. And to date, we only have one charter school in Portland that uses a weighted lottery, and that's Kairos. So one of the things that we're going to be continuing the conversation with the other charters is, you know, how they might be able to use that tool that has been provided them by the state.
And I think our legal department might be weighing in on that.
Out of curiosity, what are the weights? What gets weighted in that? Is that income?
You know, I just got... Well, it's interesting. The interesting thing in the discussion is there's not a lot of information. So I just got Kairos's weighted application this afternoon, but I haven't looked at it yet. But do you know what's allowed to be weighted by the law?
It is essentially the same process that universities that have been historically trying to pursue affirmative action have used proxies for race. So income, geographic location, other historically underserved status. And the issue that we have is that the legislature made provision for doing this. However, the Department of Education has given no guidance other than to say that each charter should individually engage counsel and come up with their own process, which may or may not land them in litigation. And it really gets my goat because it just doesn't seem remotely responsible or fair to any of the charters in the entire state. So we are going to be looking at options and perhaps doing a little bit of lobbying.
So the only other committee at the board level is we did have a budget committee meeting, which is a committee of the whole board. The other day, and we had a presentation from the superintendent and the crack finance team that we now... and budget team that we now have on board and received an overview of the school staffing report, allocation report, and also the guiding principles that are going to guide the staff in the allocation process of our teachers and other support staff and administrative staff across the schools. And then we also set the calendar for the budget process. We have a couple items that are still being set, but pretty much, I think, the framework is all set for us to do our work over the next four months. So it is an exciting time, especially if you combine that with the passage of the piece of legislation. So we're looking forward to aligning our budget behind the priorities for the district and thank the superintendent for his leadership on that front. Superintendent... Student Representative Tran, do you have a student rep report?
No, no, I see.
Okay. So at this point, the board will consider the remainder of the business agenda. We've already wrote it on resolutions five-five-seven-six and five-five-seven-seven. Are there any other items that board members would like to remove from the agenda to have a separate discussion about? Ms. Houston, are there any other changes to the business agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Bailey. Let's see. There's no public comment. Any board discussion? Nope. So the board will now vote on the business agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Aye.
So the motion passes on a six to zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting aye. For the board, I want to just note that we have an executive session immediately after this. The good news is we're ending forty minutes early. So maybe we'll get out of here before eleven. So report to the faculty lounge, I believe. So thanks to the board members. Thanks for the community members who came tonight. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on March sixth, and the meeting is now adjourned. And thank you to Cleveland for hosting us.